Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the regular board meeting of the New Britain Board of Education to order. It's February 5th and the time is 6:01 PM. All eyes for Pledge of Allegiance. Ms. Parker, would you lead us, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
President Joseph Listrow?
Here.
Vice President Barbara Marino?
Here.
Secretary Diane Rea?
Here.
Mr. Anthony Kane with a C?
Yo.
Mr. Salvador Escobalas?
Here.
Mr. Anthony Kane with a K?
Here.
Ms. Annie Parker?
Here.
Ms. Jeanina Pena?
Here.
Mr. Jose Rivera?
Here.
Ms. Tina Santino?
Right here.
Thank you, and a moment of meditation. Do we have anyone for public participation? No public participation? Okay, we can move forward. Let's start with the superintendent's report.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening, board members. Thank you for being here tonight. Good to see everyone. Good to see the little bit of sun shine this week. As always, I will introduce to you your advanced copy of the district dispatch. Our communications department continues to do such an excellent job, but you'll see a slightly new layout this month. Wanted to bring special attention to our second episode of our new podcast series. Last time, we interviewed a teacher, Mr. Todd Hugus. This time, we interviewed a student. Jenny Chaklan was awarded one of my challenge coins for having disobeyed orders in a way. So she was advised by our ROTC staff members against doing her basic training in the summer between junior and senior year, but she decided she wanted to get that out of the way and did so. So it was a real pleasure to talk to Jenny about her plans, about her dedication to our country. So I think the board members and really everybody in the public will enjoy getting to know Jenny, and there's a transcript summary of my conversation with Jenny also here. Also, a really nice write-up about Gaffney teacher, Suzie Voss, who has an excellent program about supporting students who've experienced a loss in their family. As always, the newsletter of the district dispatch, it's a great summary of some really, really wonderful things happening in our school district. And the last part of my update for you tonight is, well-known budget season. Before this board meets again, we will have made our first presentation to city government. President Listrow and I will be meeting with, and I already scheduled one, it's the Board of?
Finance.
Finance. I thought there was an apportionment or a tax in there somewhere. On the 15th of this month, to give them the first overview of our budget request. It's important for the board to know that the state-level budget potentially has a very high and strong impact on our budget. So the board will recall that when I brought my recommended budget to you, it was with an 8.6% requested increase, and thank you for the way in which you passed that budget resolution. After a number of attempted contacts by Ms. Alfano and I, we were able to understand that an additional 4.6 million would be due to the board in the form of additional alliance dollars. So that allowed, thanks to your resolution, that allowed me to reduce the budget request from 8.63, I believe it was, to 4.6%. Unfortunately, the governor has not included such monies in his budget proposal. Now, we know that the legislature stands very strongly behind the additional alliance dollars, so we are in the midst of, and we're really highly impacted by discussions between the governor and the legislature on which budget will actually be passed. The 4.6 million that's due to us is part of $150 million that was approved in extra funding, mostly for alliance districts as a way to catch up to what's called full funding in the educational cost share formula. So with this, among many, many other things in which I encourage, I always very strongly encourage board members to be active in the political process, contacting our representatives who have been very supportive of us in the past, to really convey the fact that alliance districts like ours, we are not wasteful, we're not spending these monies on things that are unproven. So I'm concerned about the governor's budget, but I'm also hopeful that the legislature will see to it that that funding remains in place. If it does not, obviously, we will have a very different kind of conversation to have for learning 8.63 versus 4.6% increase. So that's my update for this evening.
Thank you. Moving on to committee reports. I'll start with policy.
Okay, we do have a couple policies we didn't need, and we have a couple policies here to discuss that are up for board approval this evening. One that we discussed at our meeting has been tabled for now, getting further insights and information. I did also check with Pamela at CAE, they have already started reviewing our current policies. So not that she said they were going to be doing it every day of the week, but they have kicked things off and are starting to look at things and should be to us on time by eight.
Great, thank you. And curriculum.
We've talked about some of the curriculum that's happening with art, sort of updates on that, and also did some of the updates that were happening, dual language. That was a very short meeting, wasn't it?
Thank you. Finance?
Finance, we went over quite a few donations and grant approvals. We also got updates on the roof project over at Slade, the new camera systems coming up at Districtwide, as well as purchasing a forklift. Sorry, I never thought I would talk about purchasing a forklift before. I also want to give credit to Ms. Gonzalez and her team. We've had issues in the past about closing out some of the construction projects, and what was the longest we'd gone on one, Mr. Gasper?
I believe it was 13 years.
13 years, and where the process of closing out most of those. It seems like one project, before the ribbon has even touched the ground yet, she's already closed it out, the Chamberlain Project. So I want to publicly give credit to Ms. Gonzalez and her team for getting that property done, saving more revenue back to the city. I'm sure Alderman Smalley and the rest of the council will be very happy to get that money back, to bond debt, but yeah, I give credit because I'm sure it's not easy to rush getting that money back that fast, so make good job on that.
Thank you. And personnel?
Yes, we have a very short meeting, and we had three recommendations for new positions, and one of which is for alternative education program, and color guard stipend, and one for the teacher of the deaf and hard of the earth. So those are the three items we have tonight on the agenda.
Thank you. Moving on to board reports. Any board reports?
I know that several of our members were at the MLK, and Dr. Gasper as well, were at the MLK event at Roosevelt, and we had students from Howells and New Britain High who did presentations, and they were just, they were amazing, as always.
It's great. He's got a form tonight, did at the Grand Highs, PTO's having a fundraiser for February 27th from 2:00 to 9:00 over at Muyas, over just over the line, at the St. John Plaza behind Central.
I just wanted to point out that our district is doing a really good job of letting our parents know when there is something going on. In particular, and I'm really, really happy about it, is tomorrow, isn't it, for the high school?
It's Saturday.
Right? So there's two separate sessions, but the one that I'm planning on going to is tomorrow. So if you want to go on Saturday, go ahead. But thank you so much for being able to put that, as soon as I noticed that, I made sure I sent a message off, just really, that was something that we needed, it was a long time coming. Right there, you go on the website, while you're going, and to check in for Power School, you can actually see what's going to be coming up next. You don't have to go searching for a calendar, you don't have to wait for your teacher to let you know, but especially what's important is that as your kids are going from middle school to high school, that you're getting the best of that experience at that time. So that way, you're not worrying about another day going to, you know, some other opportunity or take a look anywhere else, you can actually take a look at the academies and see what they have right over here for Tuesday. Everybody should be over there, I know I will be, at least to try to pass by, and at least the information is right there. Also, Mayor Stewart did go and recognize some members of the band over at Howells today, and I heard that that was really a good time, the kids were saying how much fun that they were having, meeting her, but also getting recognized as well. And also, just in general, thanking our students in the district and our staff, I am hearing wonderful things, and my kid is eating really good things from this cooking club that they have at Slade, just saying thank you. So he made empanadas, I really love the fact that they are making some ethnic food, as well as just general exposure stuff, so that's my little district's corner.
Any other board reports? Okay, moving on to student rep report.
Hi, everyone.
Hi, Ariana.
So tomorrow, I'm also going to be there volunteering, so I'll be giving tours of the high school and representing this club, I'm a part of, so I think it'd be great if everyone could go. I know New Britain High School is showcasing a lot of opportunities we have, whether that be educational or extracurricular, so I think it'll be a great time for everyone to attend, and just really shows the good that our school is doing. So there are also multiple student dances happening at the middle school, I know Plask and Slade just had one, and I believe for Slade, there's another up-and-coming middle school dance for Valentine's Day, so that's really fun. And the beginning of quarter three and the second semester has just started, we're only a few weeks into it, but I believe progress reports will probably be coming out soon. And the Fast Spa also got released at the beginning of January, but a lot of students are struggling just to log in or to even make an account, because right now, the government, they just updated it, and people are still trying to wrap their heads around, how do we do this, and how do we get out to students? But a lot of the guidance counselors and other just resources at the high school have been really helpful, so there is some help with that. Tomorrow, the senior class of 2024, including myself, we're going to take the big panoramic photo, which I'm excited for, and I think that'll be really fun, and that'll be in the yearbook, too, and the yearbook should be available towards the beginning or the end of May, sometime around there. Spring sports are still going on, so basketball and volleyball teams are still happening right now, and should be going on until around March or the end of March. And then some seniors this past January have graduated early, and I give props to them because they already have their senior project done, and they gave it in front of our administrators, so I'm really glad to hear this among my class, where they graduated.
So, Mr. President, if I might just follow up and give a little more detail for anybody watching at home, the program mentioned by Ms. Santana and Ariana is a new style of family night, so we're trying to really give eighth-grade families and parents advanced access to our high school. We believe that New Britain High School should be these parents' first choice for where to go to high school, so I want to thank everyone at the high school, people who are volunteering, such as Ariana, our communications department with Ms. Langer. We're looking forward to really showing off the vast, ample, and really engaging programs that can be added to New Britain High School. So I hope that if anybody hasn't gotten the multiple emails or seen the multiple social media posts from Ms. Langer or seen it otherwise, that they'll take the opportunity to come find out just exactly what New Britain High School has to offer.
I've seen it on social media, I saw it at our district as well, so it's been everywhere.
So we're taking seriously the fact that, you know, perhaps a lot of people who in the past might have chosen magnet schools weren't aware of just how many fantastic things are offered at New Britain High School, so we're taking this opportunity to brag about ourselves a little bit, and we think deservedly so.
Mr. Kane?
My daughter is also going to be involved on Saturday with the event, and she mentioned that she didn't know half the clubs and activities that were offered at New Britain High until getting there and now seeing what's available, and she's a junior, and there were still things that she didn't know. And then as the father of a seventh grader, he's already getting letters from Creck and Hartford magnet schools trying to recruit, so like he's NBA shots all the way, so you're there.
Does he have a choice?
Moving on to new business. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes from the regular board meeting on January 8th, 2024?
Some more. Second. Sorry.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Item B, enrollment report.
As the board can see, we continue to grow slightly, but steadily, we're up at approximately 2.5% higher district-wide than we were at this point last year.
Don't need a vote on this?
No, informational only.
Okay. Item C, report of personnel transactions and extracurricular appointments.
It still bothers me to see so many special education people. Amazing. Sorry.
We understand, it's not for lack of trying by our talent department, that's for sure.
I mean, retirement's, I get, and that's cool. Thank you for all the service, but I just, special education is just...
It bothers me, these people of the same age as Dr. Gasper, and I retire with it. Are you rubbing it in? Yeah.
Okay, moving on to items for board approval. Can I have a motion to approve Board Policy 6172.121, DeLoreto Dual Language Program?
Some more. Second.
Discussion.
So this is a policy that came before the policy committee. It is, was going over quite thoroughly by Ms. Velazquez, along with a team advising and working with her. Just one critical thing, and then I'll leave it to Ms. Marino if she wants to summarize the discussion at the committee level, is I believe there's a critical change in here that I think is good for the equity in the district, and that's changing from what is considered an opt-in to an out-out lottery. For the non-dual language part, obviously, the dual language part of DeLoreto requires a certain language criteria. However, for the non-dual language portion of DeLoreto, this would change the lottery from opt-in to opt-out. What that basically means is, I think, greater equity and greater possibility of access across our district, meaning that parents would not have to apply specifically. Everybody who is, who meets obviously the criteria for age and enrollment would automatically be entered into that lottery and then given a chance, they would be notified, although Ms. Pena, your daughter has been selected to the lottery, would you like her to attend? And you would get a chance to say yes or no. Because we know that some parents may or may not know that there even is a lottery or that they need to apply, or perhaps there's a language difficulty, so I think changing from an opt-in to an opt-out lottery is a critical step forward in the equity of the district.
Just to clarify, there's weighted points for families that already have students at DeLoreto?
That is correct. As proposed, the weight would be twice, so not a guarantee, but if you already have a child at DeLoreto, there would be twice the likelihood that your younger child would also make it into DeLoreto. And this is a philosophical decision, there are some districts who do automatic sibling entry, there are some districts who do no preference at all. There is a balance there to consider between giving more families the opportunity to experience DeLoreto, meaning no sibling preference, versus the, how nice it is and convenient for a family if they have one child, the other one automatically gets in. So this is somewhere in between, this is basically twice the likelihood, if you have a younger child, that child would basically have, would be entered twice, so to speak, into the lottery, giving them twice the chances of being selected.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item E, may I have a motion to approve Board Policy 6153, Field Trips?
Some more. Second.
Sorry.
All right, discussion?
I do have a question, is this the policy referring to the children overnight field trips?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay. So are we going, what was decided with that policy as far as what would happen? Like, so are we going to approve this with children? Like, let's say we have, for a scenario, if we have a Muslim child in a room, female, are we going to allow a boy to stay with her just because you feel like they're female?
There was considerable discussion during the policy meeting, and any of those folks that spoke up, please feel free to do so again here. As far as the policy as it's written, the permission slip will indicate that children would be placed in a room based on the gender they identify with. There was discussion as far as trying to bold or highlight that language specifically, and apparently, that language was submitted as is by legal. While I don't think that making such changes personally lets anything out of the bag for anybody, it's just, it may have parents ask more questions. As far as, there was also an additional item that will allow for separate room if that be requested, and at the expense of the family. If I got that correctly?
That is correct.
I'm paraphrasing perfectly, I know, but again, there were comments by other folks, committee members, and as far as the, and I don't want to speak for anybody in particular, but along the lines of, you know, the teachers or administrators that would be responsible for said field trip would be the ones to review and approve any rooming assignments, and should be taking all kinds of things into consideration so as to hopefully avoid any issue. Am I incorrectly paraphrasing that by for anyone?
So students can put in requests, like if there's a group of friends that would prefer to room together, they can put in those requests, and staff would try to group them according to requests, according to who's the best fit, because some kids may just may not be able to be rooming together. But ultimately, the staff, we trust them with our kids every day, and they would be the ones who would be able to make the assignments.
They know the kids.
They know the kids. But the families do have, would have an option to request a single room as well.
Traditional cost for this.
I guess I have a question.
Well, Ms.?
No, it was Tony, you, and then me. Sorry. Just like a Girl Scout moving on.
I just want to state for the record that this policy is needed to comply with changes to state law. So this is not a policy that New Britain is taking on, independent of anyone else, we are doing this because of changes to state statute, and, you know, as Dr. Gasper referenced before, as part of the legislative process, if people disagree with the policy, then, you know, they're free to engage in the political process, engage with legislators and the governor's office, but in order to continue having overnight field trips, we have to have this policy.
Ms. Parker?
The other thing I was going to ask is, we didn't have a policy before, so how was it handled this in the window?
So this is an amendment to, we did have an existing policy, so there were a number of changes here, just a quick recap, so for example, I took out the possibility of having staff drive students around, that's something that perhaps we did a long time ago, it's no longer advisable under liability. I added the ability and presented that to the committee of baggage checks, so making sure that students aren't bringing anything on these overnights, that they are not reduced, or excuse me, increased the notification time from 90 days to a year, things that are really just kind of typical procedures for overnight field trips. And then the question of gender identity is kind of the biggest new part, as was stated earlier, in alignment with state statute.
But we haven't had any promise in the past, though, that you know?
To date, no. Again, the guidance around this isn't very new, but it has been updated recently. I just want the board to be aware that can staff members use what they know about who gets along well with whom? They can. Can staff members question a child about their gender identity? No. Can a staff member inform the parents of another child about the gender identity of somebody who's rooming with them? No.
And so as I had even said the night of the hearing and, you know, our meetings and such, so, you know, two very important takeaways from it. Being a parent first, as well as partnering with my children's teachers, we are all there for the best interests of our children and the entire district, but I recognize that I do want the advance notice, I do want to be able to prepare myself economically to be able to say, and then keep in mind, I travel with my kids all the time, so I know that the hotels are not always going to be available, but with enough advance notice, then we can kind of get ahead of that. How best can we do that? My hope, wish, and prayer at the time that we were having our discussion even as a committee was just, can we, is that something that we could embed in there? You know? Can we put in there at least, and again, it came back from the lawyers, and it's already been vetted, and this along with quite a few other policies that we've put out there to try to work within the spirit of collaboration. We're trying to keep pace with changes to the law, we're trying to keep pace with the needs of our district, we're trying to keep all of our students safe. I really just want for our parents to understand, and I do ask them, and I am engaging with our families in the district, and I do put myself out there, hey, listen, what do you think about this? And I haven't gotten too many questions or many, too many concerns in the negative. So to me, that's wonderful, because you still want your kids to get out there in the great beyond and see and go with their friends, great. But if that was my concern, I just want to be able to know that I could prepare economically that, I got five kids, dude, I got to be able to budget, click coupon something, to be able to come up with another, at least to be able to afford that other hotel room and make my, give my kid the opportunity to be able to have a good time with their friends, with their staff that's safe, that wants to look out for them, but just be able to prepare economically, because that's just, I don't know, just want to be able to. So that was something that I was trying to make sure that we at least were cognizant and be able to prepare for in that, and at least have that in bold writing, hey, listen, this is buyer beware, you know that your child is making the decision to go, we are all looking out for them, and if you have any concerns, here's the information for that teacher, that staff, whoever that's going to be with them at all times.
Thank you. Who else?
I just have one more question.
Sure.
So, Dr. Gasper, you mentioned that we cannot let parents know, do you think that will cause any issues in the future with, again, community, members of the community, parents that are not in agreement with their children sharing a room?
It's a very delicate topic, there have been news stories at the national scale of just that.
That's what I meant.
Of just that, so it is possible, and I do fully appreciate how it may be a very difficult decision for the board. You know, the advice that we've gotten from the board's attorneys on this is, this is required, I think the only other option would be not to have overnight field trips, and we know that would also be a very difficult decision, there's a lot of tradition and history and educational benefit to these trips. I do trust our teachers to the degree that they are aware and they know which kids would get along well, whether that's through friendship or for any other reason. However, it's important that the board knows that that's not foolproof, there may be a time when, if it's a room of four and there are three friends requesting a room together and the staff is left to backfill that fourth spot, there may be three kids who are not familiar with the fourth, regardless of any other issues of gender identity or friendship or other types of issues. So it is important that the board knows that it's possible. However, I am confident that the boards have However, I am confident that the board's had a full chance to review this, the advice from your attorney, and it's, I have hopes that it will go well, but it's, there is that possibility that a parent may be upset for this reason, and we'll deal with that as delicately and as transparent as we can if it does happen.
Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye. All aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes. Item F, I have a motion to approve a new position request for principal of alternative education programs.
So moved to second.
So I appreciate the board's consideration here. Typically, this is something that would have gone through the personnel committee, requested permission from the board president to bring it to you tonight, really just so that we can act quickly. This is directly connected to my budget presentation to you, in which I showed this as a 1.0 gain with a 1.0 reduction elsewhere. So there is no net budget impact on this. As the board knows, we have anywhere typically from 40 to 60 students in expulsion program at any one time. They come and go depending on the length of their expulsion and their ability to earn an early return, which is typically offered to them as part of my recommendation. So we do not need to approve a job description. The board already has a job description for alternative principal, so I'm requesting that the board consider adopting this tonight. If so, we would post immediately, because as we have an overall reduction in our administrative staff due to budget, I want to be able to offer jobs to any administrators who are currently ESAR-funded through a process that abides with the contract and offers work to people to the degree that we can. So that's my reason for asking for this tonight.
Ms. Penn.
Just a quick question. So you're saying, I understand that you're creating this new position, but who currently handles the, what you detail over here is what's not? Because you already have expulsion hearings ongoing at the elementary, middle, and high school, right?
We have not expelled an elementary student in my time here. We have had a small number for middle school students. Mr. Todd Verdi is currently on temporary assignment in this role.
Okay.
So that doesn't guarantee that he would be the permanent replacement. We would do a full posting and, if necessary, interview process, but because of some other personnel matters, he's been temporarily assigned at this position for the bulk of this school year.
So right now he's handling it, then it would go out to the general public or whoever else you want to, and then it comes back around?
Yeah, this would be an internal posting. So I'm anticipating that this, this would be only posted internally unless, for some reason, we had zero applicants, and then I may be forced to actually do an involuntary transfer. Because again, as part of my budget proposal to you, there's an overall reduction. Remember, we had a total of three elementary, excuse me, three assistant principals in the district who were ESAR-funded. I recommend keeping one of those, that being DiLoreto. That means we have two administrators, net, negative, I should say. So we are obliged by the contract to offer them work if we have it within the unit. So that's why I'm anticipating this would be an internal posting.
And I'm just always looking for what makes them unique and different versus just a regular administrator or somebody that's going to be able to, what skills are you looking for?
Yeah, it certainly is a unique program. It's, students typically stay less than a year. Part of my expulsion recommendations are always a chance for the students to earn an early return. Some students are expelled for as little as a marking period, some for up to a calendar year, but typically, I hope that they take advantage of the chance to earn an early return. So it's different than other schools where kids typically stay for at least a full year, if not the full career or the full length of the school there. It's also somebody who understands the expulsion process well. Something we always do at our expulsion hearings is, is offer mental health services. So somebody who integrates well with our partners like CMAJ.
Thank you.
All right. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Item G, may I have a motion to recommend and approve the school calendar for 2024-25 school year?
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Just wanted to provide one note to the board. We are still in our first year of implementing kind of our new calendar this year with spreading out our PD opportunities. So far, it's been going quite well, as the board's aware. We just recently had one of those half-days. Per discussion by this board last year, this calendar does honor the holiday of Eid. That was a question and concern of the board last year. In our current school year, that falls within April vacation. However, you'll know that it's listed as a holiday off where school was closed on this calendar.
And this is a week later than we usually do it, right? April vacation?
What day is that Eid next year?
This year, since the eighth.
Yeah, so I believe Ms. Velazquez may correct me where I'm wrong, but in this case, we've integrated Good Friday into the, into the vacation, thereby letting us, we kind of like gain a day. Sometimes there's the, there's basically two schools of thought. Start April vacation on Good Friday, that way you get an extra day of vacation, or integrate it, and then you get to get out of school one day earlier. So in this case, we're recommending that it be integrated.
But Eid, what day is Eid next year?
March 31st. March 31st. You'll find it in the left-hand column under the district-wide header.
I have a quick question. Sorry, a quick question. If we wanted to firm up the graduation date, does it have to be a policy, or are we able to?
No, the board can vote on a resolution for that at any time.
Okay.
So that's something that the board perhaps can consider. You remember, we had a little bit of struggle with that last year because of weather and because of where the last day of school fell. We were concerned about having to have ceremonies on a Saturday or a Sunday.
And for families who are planning for people to come in from on a stage?
Correct. So even for the year we're currently in, so even for the current 23-24 school year, the board could take a resolution basically at any time. There was a law that where it said you couldn't do that until April 1st. That law went away a couple of years ago. So you could take action in any time you chose to name a graduation date, and to your point, Ms. Reyes, I think that would give lots of families some relief.
Yeah.
The caution is, if we had, if we had really bad weather for the next three weeks and we accumulated five or six snow days, would the chosen date be too far before the end of the school year? And then you've got students who are maybe, feel like they've graduated when they've still got some work to do in order to get those passing grades.
I think it'd be safe to say, at least the March meeting, to maybe start discussing some possible dates.
Sure.
I do want to thank superintendent and cabinet for including Eid after a discussion last year, and also including all the early dismissal days on the proposed calendar and the draft. Some districts do it later on, and it's nice as a parent having those dates well in advance. One minor correction, election day is Tuesday the 5th, it's marked as November Monday the 4th.
Thank you. So we will make, we'll make that correction if the motion passes.
Any other discussion?
I am still a little concerned about having professional development on election day only because I know some of our schools are, not as many as the past, but some of our schools are used for voting, and I just feel it's logistical, armpins, Tom.
So I did meet with both registrars last school year, gave them my assurance that we would avoid that if at all possible. And Ms. Velazquez, I don't believe we ran into any issues. I know that has been an issue in the past, so wherever possible, we avoided having large groups at the polling sites. I couldn't promise them that we would have zero, because sometimes we have, some programs only exist at one particular place. So for example, Chamberlain has the audiometrist's booth, and if we had to train people on how to use the audiometrist's booth, I'd have to send people there, but that would be a small number. So I don't believe we had any concerns. Ms. Gonzalez, did we hear anything back, or Mr. Smithley, from the, from the registrars?
No issues.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes. Moving on to consent. Is there any item on consent that a board member wishes to take off?
You.
You? Item U. Is there any other items? Item U, can I have a motion to accept the financial report from December 31st, 2023?
So moved.
Second? Second. Is there anything? Any, any other discussion? Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Aye. Abstentions? Okay, motion passes. Any, may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes. Is there any other business?
I have just one further update if I may, Mr. President. As may have been seen from any of our teachers who are watching from home, the State Department of Education released a very interesting, very potentially beneficial grant program. Unfortunately, they gave superintendents literally almost no notice. So I received an update last week that this program was coming with no details. Then they simultaneously released details in the application process to teachers statewide. This is problematic because you, as a board, along with many other boards, have a crowdfunding policy that says, any such application has to be approved by the Board of Education or my designee. So my team and I, senior leadership, will be meeting tomorrow to square this up as quickly as possible. I've already asked Ms. Alfano to review the program. She has no principal concerns, but it's extremely problematic that with lots of good intentions, the State Department of Education would release these applications directly to teachers without thinking that boards such as yourselves might and probably do have policies about teachers applying for such funds. So I don't want anybody to think that I'm getting in the way of teachers applying for funds that might help their classroom. Your policy on crowdfunding is clear, and it's my job to help the staff adhere to your policies. So I'm hopeful that by end of day tomorrow or very soon thereafter, we'll be able to hopefully kind of give like a blanket approval by the superintendent, but it's just good intentions from the State Department of Education. It's really, I think, a way that they're looking to spend down to their ESAR monies that they have remaining. But unfortunately, they didn't consider the perspective of a board of education or a superintendent who has an obligation to make sure that our staff adhere to those policies. So I just wanted to be clear that I'm not standing in the way of any great ideas for some extra money from our teachers, but it is my duty to make sure that we abide by your policies. So that's where that initiative stands at the moment. Thank you.
Administratively, is a challenge to deal with a lot of $1,000 grants.
So it very much could be. So that's, that's going to be our discussion tomorrow, is, we have a process, it's a well-established process, where what we call the memos, these kind of cover sheets that come before you with the stuff behind. So Mr. Prokop and others over, over the years have developed a really nice procedure, so people fill that out, and that, that's a Google form, and it goes directly to a shared Google folder that my assistant, Ms. Rios, and I see, and then I decide, oh, that's something I can sign. Like, if it's under 700, $7,500, it doesn't need to come to you. But if it's a grant of a certain amount or more than $500, it does need to come before the board. But it's also true that this money is only around until people apply for it all. So again, it's, it's some very good intentions by the State Department of Education with, with poor implementation, or at least implementation that I suspect doesn't only cause a problem here, but is, I know many boards have such policies like your own. So I'm going to do my best to give teachers the ability to apply and hopefully apply quickly, but also make sure that we are at least compliant with the spirit of board policy in this kind of one-off, hopefully one-off instance of, of this coming directly from the state, which is being, I don't know what the right term would be, almost, Ms. Alfano, almost like donors choose is almost the fiduciary in a way. The state being the funder, donors choose being the fiduciary. However, I was communicating with the board president today, if you Google donors choose, they call themselves a crowdfunding site. So therefore, to me, as your superintendent, that invokes your crowdfunding policy, which quite clearly says that it has to be approved by me or a designee. So we're going to try to do it as quickly as possible. We don't want to get in the way of anybody applying for these monies, but just kind of wish that the State Department would have given us the full details before they just sent out the application link to the general public. So that's where we stand with that. Thank you.
Any other business? Okay, can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Second.
Thank you, everyone. Have a good night.